Good evening. Welcome. At this time, Commissioner Langley will give the invocation.
The transition. I have to come down, Mr. Commissioner.
Actually, you're going up.
That's true, too.
Let us pray. Lord our God, we bless you, we honor you, we thank you for this opportunity that you have given us to come together one more time to do the business of your people, touch our hearts and our minds that everything that we say and do will be pleasing in thy sight, and we will give your name the glory, the honor, and the praise, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. At this time, I'll call the November Board of Commissioners meeting to order. I ask that you stand, and Commissioner Walker will lead in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please face the flag.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please turn your phones off. I've got one of these ring things on my door, and I have trouble trying to figure out how to cut that completely off, so.
About $3.25.
So I'm afraid to say there's a fee out there if your phone rings. We're down to conflict of interest disclosure statement. Is there a commissioner that needs to disclose the conflict of interest on any of the items? Hearing none. We'll move down to the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. We're down to items for presentation, service awards. Dolores.
Good evening, Commissioners. We don't have any award recipients actually here tonight, but we've got several I'd like to acknowledge. First of all, we have Felicia Bell with the Department of Social Services, who has five years of service. We have Patricia Daphron with the Department of Social Services, who now has five years of service, and Victoria Miller, also with the Department of Social Services, and she has five years of service. And we have Tracy Simmons, who actually has 20 years of service with Water Finance Department. So we want to congratulate them for their service.
Thank you very much. We're down to item number two under items for presentation, Operation Green Light for Veterans. Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Having your agenda, the resolutions supporting Operation Green Light for Veterans, this is a resolution that you've passed for the last couple of years since it was implemented, and it is a resolution that recognizes our veterans and asks that people display green lights from tonight until November the 11th, Veterans Day. If you'll look around the county, our general services folks have been at it, so you'll see green lights on county buildings in recognition of that. So we'd, and I'm happy to read the resolution if you'd like me to, or you can just adopt.
Would you like to read it, Brian?
I am happy to.
Please.
Yes, sir. This is Resolution 2024-11-0401, supporting Operation Green Light for Veterans. Whereas the residents of Beaufort County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selfishly served our country and this community in the armed forces, and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas Beaufort County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, and whereas veterans continue to serve our community in American Legion posts, Veterans of Foreign Wars posts, Disabled American Veterans posts, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year, and whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future, and whereas studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life, and whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service, and whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for Veterans, and whereas Beaufort County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now therefore be it resolved with designation as a Green Light for Veterans County, Beaufort County hereby declares November the 4th, 2024 through Veterans Day, November the 11th, 2024, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service, and whereas therefore be it resolved, further resolved, that in observance of Operation Green Light, Beaufort County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence from November 24, 2024 through November the 11th, 2024. Adopted this the fourth day of November, 2024.
Entertained a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the resolution supporting Operation Green Light for Veterans, raise your right hand. Thank you, gentlemen. We're down to the Community College discussion. Dr. Loop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have with me this evening Colonel Kathy Simpson, who is the Chair of our Board of Trustees. We're going to make two statements, and Colonel Simpson is going to make the first of the two statements, which I believe you have copies of.
This letter is in response to Commissioner Richardson's request that I and Dr. Loop appear to defend our actions in allowing an LGBTQ+ student club to meet on the Beaufort County Community College campus. At the outset, please be advised that we have one club on campus that is a support group for our LGBTQ+ students and their supporters. They do not have a huge presence on campus, but they do meet to support each other and certain causes. The club has a faculty advisor, and the club complies with all college policies. The current law relating to Title IX is that gender identity and sexual orientation are protected classes under Title IX. The college's LGBTQ club also engages in activity that is protected activity by the United States Constitution, which includes the rights of freedom of speech, freedom of assembly, and freedom of association. One may disagree with the law and Constitution on any basis they choose, but the bottom line is that these laws set out the college's current obligations, and the college must comply with them. It would be illegal for the college to disallow the LGBTQ group to meet while allowing others to assemble. Our other choice would be to disallow all student clubs on campus, and we are not going to do that because a vibrant college experience is important for all of our students. To disallow all groups would be a total loss to the students, the campus, and the community. Whether certain commissioners approve of the LGBTQ+ lifestyle or not is not the subject of our appearance and should not be. The college cannot be drawn into a narrative that encourages discrimination against certain students based on sexuality. The college intends to comply with all state and federal laws that are in effect. We do not intend to be sued because we broke those laws and violate students' rights. We do not intend to waste this county's limited financial resources on litigation that we will certainly lose. The students in this club organize because they need a safe place to assemble and to give and receive support from other students. The support that the students give to each other includes anti-bullying, how to accept and resolve fractured family relationships, and suicide prevention due to the bullying that LGBTQ+ members have to endure. This club is not about sex. It is about support. It is about keeping students safe. It is about giving students a place where they can remind each other that they are worthy of staying alive and that suicide is not the answer. It is about reminding them that we are all children of the same God and that everybody deserves respect and understanding. In conclusion, the college will not and cannot violate state and federal law, and we cannot violate rights of individuals that are guaranteed by the United States Constitution. I hope this response satisfies Commissioner Richardson's inquiry. And now I'll hand it over to Dr. Loop.
Thank you, Colonel Simpson. I have a short set of remarks I'd like to make. It starts with a quote from the novelist Flannery O'Connor, and it goes as follows, quote, "All human nature vigorously resists grace because grace changes us, and the change is painful," end quote. I respectfully ask those of you who question whether Beaufort County Community College should allow our LGBTQ+ student club to meet on campus, to consider the club's true purpose, to help individual human beings thrive in the face of struggles for acceptance as well as harassment from many different sources. And then I would ask that you give these students some grace and understand that the college is attempting to do the same. Thank you.
Commissioner Richardson.
Well, to answer your question of whether your reply is acceptable or not, the answer is no, it's not acceptable to me. Here's the reason. I'm not, Title IX does not mandate that you provide anything to anybody. Title IX says that you cannot handle one particular sex person, bullying, whatever race, creed, religion differently than you do any other. It does not mandate that you become an activist and encourage a club of this kind on campus. So you have taken it upon yourselves to promote this kind of behavior. The question to the public is, because there are a variety of opinions about this unnatural behavior among the public, is whether public property is a legitimate use for this kind of a promotion. And I don't think the taxpayers of Beaufort County want to spend their money to promote this kind of an issue. What you have done is put the county and the college in an untenable position by providing for the existence of this club on your campus, and it's, at this point in time, you have maneuvered us into an undefendable position. You did this willingly, knowingly, and willfully. It says a lot more about your leadership than it does about anything else, and tells a lot about you and where you are. So Title IX, again, I want to say this again, does not mandate that you do anything overt to provide anything for anybody. It says that you are required to protect if you see abuse going on among these various classes. So you've taken it upon yourself to become an activist. The approval of the lifestyle and the use of public property, you have sent a message to young people whose minds are in the formative stages, who are being educated. You've told them on one hand, you must believe everything we tell you, we're educators, we're above everybody else, we're training you, and you're telling them with the other hand, the LGBT community lifestyle is acceptable, and we promote it, and we stand behind it. So this makes quite, this gives quite a bad impression to society and to young people, and you're leading them far, far astray from where they need to be. You should be educating people, not determining lifestyles and political issues with your behaviors. So all the other clubs that you have at the community college, to my knowledge, like welding, French, whatever, you teach courses that support those clubs. My question to you as educators is, tell me what courses you are teaching that promote the LGBTQ+ lifestyle?
First of all, this is an extracurricular club, Commissioner. It doesn't need to have a particular relationship to the courses or programs taught by the curriculum at the college. However, there are a number of disciplines that do deal with the LGBTQ lifestyle, as you call it, including psychology, sociology, literature, meaning English, as well as history. So the social sciences and the humanities most certainly would be included in that list. I would also say with respect to Title IX, that the regulations promulgated by the current administration do indeed require us not to discriminate based on sex stereotypes, sex characteristics, as well as gender identity, gender expression, pregnancy, or related conditions, disability, age, et cetera, sexual orientation, sex characteristics, all of these are required by the current Department of Justice. There is a lawsuit that was filed that enjoined certain states from not following these regulations from the Biden administration, but we are certainly beholden to do so, and we are doing so because it's the law of the land.
I want to go back to what I said to begin with. There's nothing in Title IX or anything else that mandates that you become active in promoting these issues, and when you use the public facilities to promote these issues, you have become an activist. Again, there's nothing in there that says you have to do this. There's nothing that requires you to do this.
The regulations promulgated by the Biden administration have the force of law.
We're going to have a new administration day after tomorrow. Now, I want to say this in response to the courses that you say that promote this kind of behavior.
I didn't say they promoted the behavior.
They, what do they do?
They discuss. They discuss what it means to be LGBTQ in today's world, in the world of the 19th century, in the world of the 18th century, in ancient Rome.
Rome fell because of this.
And they're, what, I'm sorry.
Rome was destroyed because of these kinds of behaviors.
And our path possibly led poisoning.
Any other commissioners?
I have one more statement to make.
Okay.
The psychology and sociology study abnormal behaviors. That's what they do.
Any other commissioner have a comment? Yes, Randy.
Tomorrow is the end of a long campaign, and I guess, and it's been strange. But without a doubt, the strangest thing I heard since October 17th was in here a month ago, and that was that Commissioner Booth caught Commissioner Richardson coming out of an LGBTQ meeting in Washington, DC. And I just thought that was the oddest thing, and he probably has more knowledge, because I've asked all of the others, and none of us have been to a meeting, and I just think that it's interesting that he has this knowledge that we don't. And having said that, I would like to make a motion that we reach out to the community college and to ask them for a naming rights, to name the LGBTQ club, the Hood Richardson LBGD Club, and that's what I, that's my motion.
I have some comments, but I'm not touching on it. Is there a second?
I'll second it, we can vote on it.
Okay, we got a second. Any discussion?
Yeah. Are you going to include the IA? I don't know what it means, but I think you're supposed to, does this plus take care of IA as well? Okay, well, if we're going to do this, you need to do it right, you know? LGBTQ+ with or without the IA?
Oh, wow.
Which, I don't know what that means. You may, I don't. Hood, do you know what it means? You went to the meeting up in Washington, DC. Do you know what?
I'm going to respond to the accusation about the meeting, but you guys finish what you're doing, and I'll do that as a separate item.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor of Randy's motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed?
Yes. Somebody turn off. Oh, I got it. You know, God is not a respecter of persons. God loves everybody. And one of the things that I heard them say was that these folk come together to encourage each other and to help each other from being bullied and to prevent suicide. You know, we, what value do we place on human life? If we say we want someone to change, how can they change if they take their own lives? It's important that we have support and have love for everyone, whether we agree with them or not. I quote my scripture again, John 13:35, "By this all men will know, you are my disciples, if you have love one for another." We've got to get to the point where we can love people in spite of what their lifestyles are. That's where we really and truly need to be, and that's all I have to say.
Let me clarify, nobody said that I hate these people at all. What I'm saying is, is public property an appropriate place to have clubs that support this kind of abnormal behavior? Now, I'll go back and address what Randy's talking about. About nine or 10 years ago, I was in Washington, DC for the Winter Conference sponsored by the National Association of County Commissioners. They publish a book that's sometimes about this thick of activities that go on, and I go through that book pretty thoroughly because there's always three or four places that I want to be at the same time, and you can't be, so you have to decide a tight schedule, and it's always a very informative session. It was in the very early days of the LGBT movement that we have to accept this. So I'm walking around, I get up early in the morning, I'm walking around the place, and I see this little eight and a half by 11 piece of paper posted with the rest of the posters that are on the walls, this is a big place, and I look at it, and it says there's going to be a meeting, LGBTQ meeting, to promote LGBTQ law and legal activities, and that it's going to be held, believe it or not, like something like 6:30 in the morning in a little room somewhere in the confines of this huge building. And I said, well, you know, I represent the citizens of Beaufort County. If this is something that's just getting started, part of my representation is to know what's going on. So why is this meeting so secret? Why wasn't it published so that everybody could see it in the book? And you know why it wasn't published, so everybody could see it in the book, because there'd be a lot of people screaming about it. So I got up, I usually get up early, so I went down and I sat in the meeting, and there was another person there, I don't remember his name, from Pitt County, was in the same meeting that I was in. I was there to get information, and I got information out of it. That was the very beginning of the legislative effort to make LGBTQ legal and to force the public to accept it. And that's what the meeting was about, is how do we get organized, and how do we get the money, and how do we do this, and how do we do that? So yeah, I was on the ground floor of LGBTQ. Doesn't mean that I support it. But this, again, this club meeting, they can have the club meeting. I'm saying don't have the club meeting. I'm not saying don't have a club meeting. I'm saying meet somewhere other than public property and stop sending these awful signals to young people that this abnormal behavior is acceptable, and that's what these people are doing.
Okay, I think we've heard enough, and I would like to say to representatives from the community college, thank you for your leadership, and thank you for what you do each day. You're one of the biggest assets that we have in Beaufort County.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for coming. Okay, we're down to the public comments. The first one is Joanne.
Good evening, gentlemen. Harry, I'll do it tonight. Looks like you'll have a full schedule the way things are going. I'm just going to make mine real short for you tonight. I'm not going to elaborate on all that has happened since January the 26th. However, I do want to give one short update. Went to court on October the 23rd, and at that time, because Jessica would not take the deal offered of getting one child returned to her, we now have no future court date. So everything is more or less in limbo. The young boy that was 15 is now 16. He had his birthday, October the 15th. We were supposed to have a Zoom call, me included, at DSS, so that we could celebrate his birthday. It started, it wasn't a Zoom call, it was a regular phone call. I was told that I could not be in there full-time because they wanted time for the mother and the sister to be able to have a private conversation with him. I was escorted out. The young boy had specifically asked that I please be there because he refers to me as his safe place. Upon leaving the room as requested, I went to the lobby. I pulled out my phone, and I proceeded to call the prayer line. It was Copeland Prayer Line. I was sitting in a wheelchair in the first room as you come into DSS. I had two DSS workers tell me to leave the building. It's all recorded on the phone call. I asked the prayer partner that I was asking for peace to be brought into this whole situation to please hold on as I was being escorted out of the building. I tried to explain to them that I had been in a meeting, and anyway, I was very rudely and aggressively told to get out of the building. This is unacceptable behavior in any standards. Now, this young boy is now still in South Carolina with an undetermined date for court. He has been put on additional medication at the hands of the director, Lori Leggett. They continue to pump medication into him. They receive more funds when these children are given medication. slipper shoes, not a firm foundation, and he's not getting what he needs to survive. This young man, this is, this is not going well. Gentlemen, please have mercy on this and intervene. Look into this. Please look into this. This is not right. Do you have any questions?
We, we don't, we don't take questions during the first, during the public comments. Thank you.
I believe my time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do not see any of our representatives here, elected officials. Next item is items for consent. Is there any item that you would like to pull for further discussion?
I'd like to pull the item that has to do with page 16.
That's number two.
Arpa special, number two.
Number two, okay. Anyone else? All right, need a motion to?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the other four items. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of the items for consent, with the exception of number two, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay. You want to, need a, why don't we go ahead and go to that on page 16? Hood, what, what is your question for?
My understanding, I guess I'll ask a question. My understanding is this is to set up the capital budget fund for the $4 million?
No, sir. So basically, we have already set up that capital project fund. There are actually three separate funds that we're using for ARPA funds. We've got the special revenue fund, where we received the $9.128 million into the county. We supplanted the general fund salary and public safety salary and benefits by using the ARPA funds, which freed up general fund dollars to do other projects that this board voted to do. And those projects were made up of water projects and general fund projects. So we had to set up two separate funds for those. So we're really working with three separate funds to account for the ARPA funds. And there was a little bit of a mix-up when we were doing the approvals and the budgetary allocations on where we budgeted those funds. In other words, the $4 million, if you look at page 17, should have been budgeted in the special revenue fund. It was erroneously previously budgeted in the general fund, capital fund. So this is just kind of straightening that all out.
Okay, but the use of the $4 million is to expand the internet in Beaufort County?
It is.
Okay. What areas of the county are going to be getting this internet? One of the reasons I'm bringing this up is I have a lot of people who just don't believe that the county is putting money into telephone companies to expand the internet.
So if people are interested in looking at that, they can go on the website, North Carolina Broadband NC1 map, and it shows where all the projects are across the entire state for great grants and for cap grants. And that's where we're matching our funds up against to get that in the, in the county.
What phone, what companies got this money?
There were, there were a couple of companies that got it. Bright Speed was an award, and Charter Spectrum was awarded.
Okay. And they're extending the, the internet in the areas of the county that don't have the internet?
They are, by legislation, they are extending it to areas that are either unserved or underserved.
Okay. What the public needs to understand about this is the, the broadband expansion is an outgrowth from the Obama administration, and the project is still living, that everybody, whether they want it or not, needs to have the internet in their house, mainly so that the, once the federal government gets everybody on the internet, they can do what Australia did during the COVID crisis, and that is require you to report in daily. And they used special identification methods to make sure you were who you said you were when you were on the screen, on the camera. It was not a good thing. Beaufort County, Beaufort County shouldn't be doing this. But that answers my question for those of you who don't believe that the county is involved in expanding the internet.
Okay. John?
Oops. I think it's important for the public to also understand, nobody's required to hook up to the internet. The internet will be there if they want it. If they don't want it, they don't have to hook up. So it's not going into everybody's home by mandate.
Jerry?
Well, I, I've talked to some folk down in the Richland community, and they just walked up to me and, and thanked the commissioners as a whole for having high-speed internet in Aurora. They said they went a long time without any type of internet, and they said now other folk who are moving into the area, who do work from home, are now able to, to be successful in, in their endeavors. So they wanted to thank us for doing it, and I think it's money well spent.
Any, any other comments? I need a motion to approve the budget amendments.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay. We're down for items for discussion or decision, soil and water. Ann?
So the Beaufort Soil and Water, excuse me, Conservation District closed its first conservation easement through the Department of Ag and Consumer Services, Farmland Preservation Division on September 12th of this year, a project that began in 2019. In order to meet the payment obligations for the professional services provided during the project, the district requested additional funds in the amount of $10,000 from Farmland Preservation. Before you tonight is a budget amendment for the additional funds. The district's Board of Supervisors approved the additional funds during a meeting on October 21 of this year, and requests that Beaufort County's Board of Commissioners approve those funds in the $10,000 budget amendment submitted tonight.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the project budget ordinance in the amount of $10,000. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Ann.
Thank you so much.
Next one is economic development. That would be Sue.
Good evening, commissioners. On September 9th, this board approved a resolution in support of a grant application for Project Event. On October 17th, the governor announced an award of a $25,000 building reuse grant from the Department of Commerce. Under terms of the grant agreement, the company will invest $600,000 in three years, create and maintain five jobs, and within 18 months, complete building renovations within that time. The company may request reimbursement of funds only after the job requirements of the grant agreement have been completed. It is our recommendation to accept the North Carolina Commerce Building Reuse Grant amount of $25,000 for Project Event or Hometown Hall.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation from Susan.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve, and we also have a second. Discussion, questions of Susan. Okay, all those in favor of acceptance of the North Carolina Commerce Build and Reuse Grant, award of $25,000 for Project Event slash Hometown Hall, please raise your right hand.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Next item is our, from our tax assessor. And Lloyd has two items. Good evening.
Good evening.
Lloyd?
All well. All right, I believe first up was the acceptance of the Schedule values pursuant to state statute and recommendation. We have already done the other requirements for the schedule. We, of course, discussed the schedule at the last meeting. We then had a public hearing a recent date with, I believe, all the commissioners present open for public discussion. There was none at this time. I have not received anything from the public, have not received any questions, received anything to that effect, nor has my office to that knowledge. And to my understanding, the next step along the way is tonight, I'm asking you all to vote to accept the schedule, which again, has been online. We've had it up since the first meeting. We also have a copy in my office. There's also a copy in the administration office that you can find, the management office here of the county. We have for public to peruse. Of course, nowadays, the online's probably a much easier way to look at it. So we have that, as like I said, under my, my area. And then, as far as that goes, the other piece to that, we are running and have been running news ads pursuant, again, to statute, to mention this process and talk about this process. And we're going to run several more as this goes, telling people this is what the next steps are, and this is where we're going down to the revaluation, just that simple. So I'd ask tonight that you all vote to accept the schedule.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation from Lloyd. Entertain a motion to approve the schedule, 2025 schedule of values.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the approval, raise your right hand. Thank you. You want to go to your next item?
So the next one is kind of a quality of life item, in a way. So we're getting ready to go into the appeal scenario for, you know, of course, the revaluation. We also still have a few left out from the last one, so to speak, from last year's for Property Tax Commission. So I have a couple sitting there right now that are Property Tax Commission cases that have been items that have popped up the last year or the last several years from y'all's Board of Equalization reviews. So these are separate from the revow, and then again, we are going into revow. Some of these items are, once we, I hear them or whatever, at the beginning of the year, there's nothing I can do, or they want to go to y'all, they go to y'all as the Board of Equalization. And after the Board of Equalization, you go to the Property Tax Commission. After the Property Tax Commission, you go to the State Pillel Board, or you go to, of course, the North Carolina Superior Court, whichever way it works. So as that goes, it is, in this county, it has been, I believe, the process is, I have brought to you cases where I want to make an offer to someone to not go to the Property Tax Commission, you know, to see if we can handle it outside of that commission, especially in cases where the value is not going to really make sense for the county to go. For instance, without getting too heavy into it, some of the cases, one of them I know of right now, I think the refund would be literally under $100, we'll say. So the point to that would be, I would like to make a deal with that person. We've looked at that, we'd like to come to resolution. But I have been approaching y'all and having discussions with y'all individually. So what I, or as a group, sorry. So what I would like to do is, if we could set a number on what I'm able to handle myself. So if I can work with, you know, taxpayer, property tax commission case, to a certain point, I believe we thought of a number that keeps that kind of low. We have that in front of you. I think it's just a value difference, not, not a bill difference, not a bill difference, but a value difference of 100,000 or 25% in those bigger commercial cases. You gentlemen will still see the bigger cases. You would have still say on the bigger cases as far as that goes. You also vote on the refunds. You would be able to see all of any of those that would be going for you or past you. But this would be specifically, and I have one here with me, this would be on the smaller cases, like, you know, the person missed the Board of Equalization review for whatever reason. We voted on it, y'all voted on it. It was decided, this is just an example. They then appealed to the Property Tax Commission and said, oh, but wait, I had some information, or I had whatever, or just one example, and be able to work with them to come up with a resolution that works out, instead of having to do a session with y'all and be able to do that. A lot of counties do this. Some do it carte blanche. I ain't worried about that. I would like to work out a good number, like a low number like that. I think it's just a fair number we can all work with. Bigger cases all still come before y'all. It also helps me on turnaround. For instance, I just got a case recently. I then have to get it to y'all. I then have to get to the Property Tax Commission, or get an extension, I have to get an attorney, our attorney, or whoever to go with me to make that work. Sometimes it does make it a hard turnaround on doing this with having to come and present to y'all and do the rest. So that would take care of it on the smaller cases. Still fully respect putting the larger cases in front of y'all.
Yes. Ed?
Lloyd, what would you call the benchmark level?
I think I put it in front of y'all at $100,000 of value, or I think I said 25% value change.
Twenty, twenty.
Twenty? Oh, sorry. Twenty then, twenty works. I wonder where I put it. So 20 would be, just for an example, let's say for a moment, just completely, we have somebody that has a $20,000 lot, and they, for whatever reason, come, we go through everything, and they then provide, you want to go to Property Tax Commission because it's the principle of it, you know, or whatever, and they provide some information about that maybe we didn't have, or maybe additional, or something like that. I take a look at it, it looks good. We're going to lower that to 15,000 to make them happy. I have seen that. It's a $5,000 difference. It would absolutely fall under this. What would happen is, I'm able to make that deal with them. I've sent it to the Property Tax Commission. Again, you're still seeing the refund when it comes through. There's still trackability. There's nothing being hidden. There's no way to do that. It all has to be done through that way. So that would be in a case of what you said.
I make that motion, you said 20?
Go ahead.
20,000.
So it's 100,000 or 20%?
20% change, change in value.
Before there's a second, I can second that. But what I would like to add to your motion, if you're willing, is that you still give us a list of these?
Oh, yes.
That you make every month as a separate list of adjustments that you've made.
So if I understand correctly, the list that we're doing isn't going to change. This would actually be, do you all recall, being careful how I say this, because it doesn't, but we have met, I believe in closed session, a couple times regarding value specifically. This would, would, would lower the number of those and allow me to be able to make some of those movements. You would still be seeing, oh, any kind of refund through the board. It would still come over $100, et cetera.
Yeah, well.
Nothing would change for that.
But, but I think you should show a separate list that said that you have negotiated these yourself. Now, my purpose in this is, Lloyd, you're a very solid guy. Everything works fine. I don't have a problem with you. I'm worried about the guy that comes behind you who suddenly decides that he's going to be a real popular individual, and he's going to give everybody an adjustment, and the commissioners don't know what's going on. So that's the only reason that I asked for that, is the list of adjustments that you have made negotiating with taxpayers, you just give it to us every month, and, and if the number starts going up, we're going to know that something's wrong.
I completely understand. My, I'm looking over at, of course, county management. My, my thought, well, that would be a fine. Yeah, absolutely. We could put it on a consent item or something to that effect, then run it through. Great.
That's all. So I second your motion.
He's, he's not asking for a consent. He's asking for just notifications.
Even better. I can do that as a base. All right, great. Great, okay, misunderstood. Perfect. We're okay. Yep.
So if you're willing to change your motion to include that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, Katie can put that in the information package. Yeah. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Anyone else have another question of Lloyd? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, or the motion, the resolution, recommendation, raise your hand.
Thank y'all, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're down to Katie on the legislative goals. Vote and delegate.
Yes, sir. The Legislative Goals Conference is coming up November 14th and 15th in Wake County, and the county has encouraged to send a delegate to vote for legislative goals that you, that have been proposed. They're asking for one delegate and one alternate.
Okay. Just for information, I, I have registered to attend. Have you, have you registered too?
I make a motion that the chairman and vice chairman be out, delegate and alternate delegate.
Second. And we have a second. By Randy. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay, we're down for items for discussion. Jail Food Service Presentation, and the sheriff is here with his PowerPoint, so.
Hey, good evening, Commissioners, Chairman.
Good evening.
Before we start on ours, I'd like to say thank you for voting in on the, the Green Light, Operation Green Light for the veterans. As a veteran myself, I think that was last year. It made the town look really very symbolically beautiful. My office, front, front lights lit up, and I, I'm very proud of it. So I want to tell you thank you personally. Secondly, I want to tell you thank you. I attended the Southern Album Memorial Association
Before we start on ours, I'd like to say thank you for voting in on the, the green light, Operation Green Light for the Veterans. As a veteran myself, I think that was last year. It made the town look really very symbolically beautiful. My office front, front lights lit up, and I'm very proud of it. So I want to tell you thank you personally. Secondly, I want to tell you thank you. I attended the Southern Apple Memorial Association. That I was proudly represented there by y'all's, y'all's vote. And I want to tell you thank you for recommending me to be there and hope to do more visits and learn more as I go forward. Appreciate it. But tonight, just giving you a brief, and what you're already familiar with is my concerns of going with a bid to go out to a new vendor for, a food vendor, to meet the needs of quality, value, and meeting the needs of nutrition, and also meeting the, the requirements that are put in by the nutritionists. And we weren't meeting those. Now, the reason, I'm going to go through these slides, but I want to just let you know that the vendor is a owner of a business within our region, and I wish not to go into many of your, probably your curious questions, because I think it could bring detriment upon them. So if you got any questions or concern, I just ask you to take that in consideration, whatever you choose to do. But when I was elected sheriff, referencing the slide, I swore an oath to preserve, swore an oath to protect and serve all citizens. So that means also those that are in the community in the jail. As you know, some of, this community is just a safe place until they are taken up before the judge, because they're in there as a pre-trial, not as a adjudication, and not as a servant of sentence. So it's our duty and responsibility to serve and continue to give a quality of needs, whether it be healthcare, food, et cetera. And that need, after much work and coordination with the current vendor, it would, it would correct itself shortly, briefly, and then it would go right back into despair. I took it upon myself to order quality, high-quality coolers that could be storage for temperature-controlled, hopefully keep these, the temperature regulated at a higher temperature while the food is being in transit for a 40-minute ride. And we put that heat pads in it, close it, and to no end, it was still not meeting, meeting the temperature that meets the regulations and temperature of the nutrition's requirements. So inconsistent meal portions create a safety risk also in the facility, and that comes from inconsistency of when the scoop is scooped into these open trays, they get in their block, and now they become us's and them. You got more than I did, your chicken's larger than mine, and inconsistency, it was almost as if my plea into them would only go for about 30, 60 days, and then they'd go right back into that low. I wanted to address it. I want to address it, so I asked for a request, a proposal, to see what our options were. Next slide. So the original request for proposal was June 7th at 24:00. And at that time, only one bid was submitted. We met right here in this room, and only one bid came forth, and that did not meet the public bidding mandate. So we had to reschedule, put it out for bid again, and it went out for resubmit. So it was reissued July 10th with bids due on August 23rd of 2024. A request of mine was to extend the deadline for bids. The extension was granted because there was some, some scheduling conflicts on my part, and I had to address them, and, and we went forward with everyone being notified again of the change, so they would have ample time to make sure they met that deadline. Final addendum went out for all bidders on September 24th, 2024. Next slide. So Tuesday, October 1st, the submitted bids were opened at the designated time and briefly reviewed, and the current vendor did not come that day, did not submit the bids that day. We have no, we didn't have any notification, no fourth, you know, any reason, no explanation, until the close of the bid. And after the deadline, then the vendor came forth and said it was in her error that the bid was not presented according to the deadline and the rules of public bidding. So the current vendor wanted to know if she could still bring her bid, and as a fairness to the bidding process, and without having to extend another 30 days, it was, it was closed bid. Another bid option was not provided. Next slide. So the outcome of the bids that were presented, you can look down the left column in the vendor name, which at that time, the only one that was relevant to me that I knew about was K&amp;W, and I truly miss them in Greymouth, North Carolina. Y'all remember Canes and Walkers in Greymouth? That is the actual cafeteria, they no longer in Greymouth, but yet they still hold a license to provide bids and service. So if you move along, you can see the X represents what, what they provided. So I go to the price, we'll all be an equal, go to the price. Our average for the last 12 months, 12 to 18 months, has been 60. Everything we do is based on 60. You know, our bid count is 85. So if you did go over to the column to your right, one more, so if you use those last two columns as we do, you will see that the bid that bid the lowest was on the second line. This, he was Trinity Services. So Trinity Service come after doing some homework. They also provide services for Craven County Detention, Hamlico County, and, and I did not bring the book, because I believe y'all were briefed that last month. But the reason that I continued to talk to them about coming to Beaufort County, we don't have a kitchen, we don't have the ability to heat, we don't have the ability to cook, but we do have the ability to have refrigeration, and, you know, a location point. And in their plan, they're going to provide a refrigeration to take care of the cold meal of that 24-hour meal requirement. We'll go with two meals and one cold meal. And in this contract, they'll provide the refrigeration that meets the qualifications to keep temperature regulated. And all of that is calculated into their contract, and it has a depreciation over a five-year period. And it just, at the end of that payment, or correction, after the end of that five-year, the equipment goes to the vendor who, that where it's sitting at. So there's no additional cost to us. It's all built into this rate that you see here. Did I explain that correctly? Are you familiar with that? Okay, that's fine. But that's the way it's explained. Any questions on, on that slide? So fifteen dollars and 21 cents.
I got one, if you don't mind.
Yes.
You said this is a five-year contract?
It's not a contract.
An agreement, then?
Agreement.
Well, that's a contract.
They go for three years.
Yeah.
Not five years.
What is your backout plan? What is your backout plan? Like, if they come in and you got the same problem that you had with this other vendor, that the food is not staying warm, the temperature is not staying at the same thing, what is the, what is your backout plan?
To manage, oversee it, continue to make copies of unsatisfied performance, and, and go through the same, go through the same measures we're going through on this.
So, so you got a three-year agreement? 15 months, or 12 months from now, 10 months from now, you find out that this is not what you expected, this is not meeting your requirements. Do you have to put up with them for three years, 36 months, or how do you?
The book, the book that all that contract's in, it's sitting on my desk. My understood was y'all were briefed that last, on the last.
We weren't briefed that, that, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just, I just want to know in case it don't work out, that we won't have to step in, because this other company was with us for five years or longer, wasn't it?
That's correct, five years.
So that's what I was doing to see was they were back out in case this one didn't work out.
I would handle it the same way I'm doing today, is if it fails to meet the expectations of nutrition and quality, not value, but quality, because the value, to me, is a totality of what services.
So do refrigerators go with them? If you let them go, do the refrigerators go with them?
In the first three years.
First three years?
That's correct.
They go with them?
Yes.
Okay. That answers my question.
Is there a variety to the food that comes every day?
There is a, there is.
So, you know, when you, you get stuck on the chicken, I mean, is it like, do they get a choice of dark meat, white meat? Or, I mean, how's the chicken sliced that it's coming up so short?
Currently, what we're doing is, we, what happens in internal in a confined space, they go into these special meals. So the special meals is a separate order. We don't serve fish and pork anyway. We just remove that completely off the menu. So the, the disparity of the meals, and that is the portion of inconsistency of the portion. And when we order by plate number, we'll order a percentage over that. Say if we got 58, then we'll order 10% over that, because it's become a norm that there's a shortage, or in serving, that plate will hit the floor, and we have to some way repair that really quick. So the, if I'm getting your answer, the portion of that serving is based on a, a much deeper detail, Department of Corrections serving, like a three-ounce serving of meat, three-ounce serving of beans, et cetera. That inconsistency has, has been the issue. The issue with it goes, it translates into an unsafe work environment, because now they have become disrespectful to the detention officer. Now they're outwardly, so that's the concerns I've had with portion control.
Are you able to take a picture of the deficient plate of food? I mean.
Now, to my understanding, yes, all that's compiled in that, I responded to Commissioner Richard, that he requested complaints, all the complaints that we have received, that's a pictures, photos, email reaction.
And where is that?
Right there in that stack of papers.
Oh, I see, okay.
There is a, there is ample, now, again, I could go into some very undesirable, but again, this restaurant is still active in our region. I just, I hope, if you got any specific questions, I'll. Okay.
So Sheriff Hammond, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Trinity was part of the original bid, right?
It was.
Process. Okay.
Trinity came in on the
Second round.
Second, uh, third round. On the third round.
Second, second one.
Number two, number two.
So the first round was the single bid.
Right.
Second round was my request to extend the bid.
But that didn't bring in new bids at that point, right? It just extended the deadline.
It extended the deadline. And within that extension, we would not have known all of the bidders coming in.
Okay. So because of the extension, we got additional bids came in?
Where we got our bids come in.
Yeah.
That's right. I wouldn't have known if there were one again. I know that there were some working on bids, yes.
That's not correct. You did, during the extension, you couldn't have gotten new bids, hers would have been in. So you had to rebuild it again, because you didn't get nothing during hers, according to what you said.
Well, you remember my second was on my request to.
To extend it?
Yes.
And didn't come in?
That's correct.
So that, that would, so, so then, is that correct?
Let me clarify. If you go back, Brandon, if you go back to the second page of this presentation, we originally sent out the request for proposals on June 7th. And when we meant to open those bids, there was only one bid, and you have to have more than one bid.
I got it.
So, no, you just have to have more than one. So we, we re-advertised, and with a new due date of August 23rd. And I can't tell you how many bids that we had before August 23rd, when we put out a notice that the new deadline was October 1st.
Okay. So, so. Stay what you're saying. So in that case, hers was in this extended bid for.
Yeah, but it was never open, and she left with her bid, and she knew that it, it had been extended. She was notified by email, she was told in person that day, and it was on our website. So it was her responsibility to resubmit it, because it wasn't left with us.
Well, that's the problem that I have, I mean, that's the question that I have. Why would you have to resubmit it if you extended it?
She could have left it with us that day, and we would have held on to it, but she chose not to do that.
That's it.
So she missed, she missed two bid, two bid cycle deadlines?
No, she missed one.
The first, okay.
No, she missed one time, the first time. She missed the second deadline. She could have definitely have left us, left us, her bid packet would have remained unopened in the vault, and we would have opened it on October 1st, but she chose to take it with her, and it was her responsibility to resubmit it.
You want, you want to go to the next slide?
You, thank you for clearing that. I think I explained it better as I was going through it the first time. All right, any questions on, on the, well, we just went on through that. And it says I have personally reviewed all the bids. Trinity is the current inmate meal provider. All meals provided will meet the minimum nourishment prescribed by law. Trinity Service was the only bidder that has a local proven infrastructure, being that I was able to reach back to Sheriff of Craven and Sheriff of Hamlico and have some, some working relationship with them, as I do. And Trinity Service had the lowest, and they were responsive, and they had the presentation of their bid covered all the details that was required by them. All right, next slide, please. So the Trinity comparisons to Trump's, there is a difference in fee. And you can look at the bottom line of Trinity Services versus what Trump's. And since the current vendor, that price would have been at $9.95, however, Trump stated the cost would, and they gave their explanation of what they, they freely gave us that information without looking at the bid packet. So there was no document to show to support that. And next slide, please. Any questions?
We got any questions?
Turn your mic on.
You gotta, you gotta keep in mind that within the bid process, we already have a vendor who's willing to continue to serve us, that you can always reject any and all bids. You don't have to accept bids just because they are some. You don't have to accept bids just because they are submitted. That's standard in all bid packages. Has there been as many as two hundred meals ordered a day, a hundred and fifty meals ordered in any day?
An average of sixty.
No, has there been as many as a hundred and fifty? Has there been as many? Well, see, well, has, a hundred and fifty meals ordered at a time, let's put it that way, for a meal, for one meal?
Not, not since my tenure.
Never, okay. Uh, has there been a hundred and twenty meals ordered for one meal?
Most meals to my, and since I've been here is between the seventy, seventy-five mark, if I recall.
Okay. Going, going to the last page of this, uh, the, um, of your presentation, the difference of sixty-five thousand dollars, uh, they, these people submitted a bid of thirteen dollars and eighty cents, we're up to fifteen twenty-one, is the difference between thirteen eighty and fifteen twenty-one, that's a dollar and forty cents a meal, is that the refrigeration?
No, the fifteen twenty-one, no, no, sir.
It's the difference in the amount of meals.
It's the difference in lesser meals, the sixty to seven rings.
Wait a minute, I'm lost. Daily cost for three meals, Trinity Services, fifteen dollars and twenty-one cents.
That's, that was in the range of if they prepared fifty, sixty to seventy meals, that's the cost for that range of meals.
Right, well, that's, well, we're all, you know, that's, you're saying estimated daily meal is sixty-five, that's in the middle of that, so we're, we've got apples to apples.
So the refrigeration, all of that, what they do is they take all of the depreciated cost of that refrigerator over a five-year period. And they include that in the cost of their meal rate.
That's, but that must be the difference between their bid of thirteen dollars and eighty cents and fifteen dollars and twenty-one cents?
If the more they cook, the cheaper they can price it, then that's the way I interpret that.
Okay, how much money are we, is involved in the refrigeration equipment?
Zero money out of.
No, no, how much are they paying for? You, you said it's going to be depreciated, and it's depreciated against the meals, so you must know what the refrigeration equipment costs.
And I do not have that cost in my, right.
Well, see, this.
Because that's part of their contract.
These prices are not understandable based upon what you've been saying. They don't come together and make sense.
I'm briefing you what, what the actual cost of the meals are per. The only question, you're confused, it sounds to me, is the cost of that refrigeration.
No, the cost of the refrigeration is a separate item. If, if what you've given us is the cost of the meals from Trinity is fifteen dollars and twenty-one cents a day, per meal, well, what is it?
Okay, if you look at page four, Brandon, can you bring up page four of the presentation, That was it. Yes, thank you. Okay, so currently, if we look at Trump's, the cost per inmate to feed an inmate three meals a day is twelve dollars and forty-five cent. Trinity's bid was fifteen dollars and twenty-one cent, that's for three meals per day, that's the cost to feed one inmate three meals a day. If we multiply that by an average of sixty-five inmates in the jail, you got a total estimated daily cost to the county for meals of nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-five cent for Trinity, and currently we'd be paying eight oh nine twenty-five. We multiply that by three hundred and sixty-five days a year, the total annual estimated cost for going to the new provider is three hundred and sixty thousand currently, it's two hundred and ninety-five thousand, the additional cost, which my understanding is the sheriff's office is going to absorb that within his existing budget, is an additional sixty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Okay, that's exactly what this piece of paper says. I'll ask you again, how much are you going to pay Trinity if you enter into this agreement per day to feed one prisoner?
Fifteen dollars and twenty-one cent divided by three.
All right, fifteen dollars per day, I said per day, I didn't say per meal.
Okay.
Okay, fifty.
That's the per day.
Okay, we're all talking on the same thing. Now, let's get into the distinction between an agreement and a contract.
Same thing.
That's exactly right. So you're gonna, if, if you do this, you're going to bring a contract to the county from Trinity.
That's correct.
For the commissioners to approve.
That is correct.
And that, that contract is going to increase our annual food cost, sixty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars per year. I mean, per. Yeah, per year. Okay, I'm kind of like Ed Booth here, you're going with a new vendor, I'm not sure that, how do, you don't know that you won't have the same problems that you're having now or worse before it's over with. I'm going back to this lady that's providing these services. I've spoken with her, she doesn't have any problem in talking about the issues that you don't want to talk about. Okay.
She, she has that prerogative to come up here and speak?
No, she was not invited here to speak, and it's unfair to say she has that prerogative when we're considering this issue right now. Number one, there was, there was allegations made that she didn't pay her sales taxes, that the state had to come and take her, collect her sales taxes because she didn't want to pay them. Is that an issue that happened?
I don't manage that.
I thought I saw that on an email from your office.
I can speak to that, yes, it did happen.
Okay, that's fine.
I was required to garnish a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars out of her checks that we paid her.
Out of her, okay.
Yes.
What does that do to have to do with the quality of food?
Um, I don't know that it has anything to do with the quality of food. I think it has a lot to do with the stability of the service. My understanding is that she was, because we were taking sixty percent of her payment that we were making every two weeks, she commented on multiple occasions that she couldn't even pay for her food bill to prepare the meals because we are garnishing so much. And I was under state, you know, requirement to do that. So it, it has a lot to do with continuity of service, dependability of service, I believe.
But she's provided service for five years, so it's hard to argue that she can't provide service. She did it for five years.
Why wasn't garnishing her for five years? I garnished her for the last night.
No, you said it had to do with the, her ability to provide continuous service and quality of service, and she provided service for five years.
Commissioner, you asked me what I thought the fact that I garnished a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars had to do with her service, and I told you.
No, I asked you what it had to do with the quality of her food.
And I said it had nothing to do with the quality of the food. I believe it has to do with her potential ability to offer the service.
Well, but my potential ability is I may drop dead when this meeting's over. Does that mean it's going to happen? I mean, I've been here eighty-four years, so.
And I can tell you that.
It looks like I'd be here a while longer.
The quality of the service is translating to the quality of what the detention officers have to deal with.
All right, any, any other commissioner have a question?
No, I have more questions. Am I allowed to speak?
Well, yeah, how about taking a deep breath and we'll see if we got any more and I'll come back to you.
Okay.
You still can ask.
Thank you.
And you may be right up, I don't know.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else have any questions?
Just, just to clarify, you're going to come back with a contract for us to review and approve?
I would hope that I will submit that during the month so you can review it before, if you've not seen it. I don't think you need to look at it.
We haven't seen anything except this presentation.
Okay, that was, that's fair.
Okay. So I don't, yeah, and you don't have the contract with you?
Not here.
So a lot of the questions we may have, you won't have an answer for?
That's correct. I was, I was understanding that y'all had been briefed on this.
Let me, let me, let me ask the staff, in the, in the bid process, are we at the point where you're asking us to make a decision?
I, I think the sheriff's office is asking you to make a decision on the selection of the bidder. They've made a recommendation to you based on a bid process that they are recommending the lowest responsive responsible bidder, and that's Trinity Services.
Okay.
And I appreciate you.
And we would bring back to you a contract at the next meeting to finalize that.
Okay. Okay.
I just want to remind the commissioners, we've had service, decent service for five years, changing vendors in this kind of a service is a risky thing, it's always risky, even with a, even with a company like K and W, because I truly miss K and W in Greenville too. And, uh, but that doesn't mean that, that these people are going to be able to provide this kind of service. For sixty-five thousand dollars a year, based upon satisfying some prisoner complaints who are temporary customers in our jail, uh, to me, it's not, it's not worth the increase, understanding the quality of service has been reasonably acceptable that we've received up until now. We have had, I've been a commissioner a long time, this is not a new problem. Every sheriff that we have had has had this same problem and has come and presented it to us. And a lot of it goes to this. If you keep inmates happy, then they don't give you as much trouble as if they're not happy. So what sheriffs try, tried to do in the past is to placate inmates by giving them services and things that they want today, and then tomorrow they want something else that's even better. You need to, you need to keep in mind, you need to keep in mind that these inmates don't live in the jail, they're there temporarily, and that jail is not supposed to be a fun place.
Okay, any, any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, the low bid.
Well, no.
To, uh, Trinity?
To approve anything, because he hasn't answered all the questions. He hasn't even come close.
You're going to get a chance to approve the, uh, contract.
No, that's a sham deal. A motion for him to present a contract for our approval, not to approve the bid. That's not what we should be doing.
I make a motion that we approve, moving forward with a contract from Trinity. Okay, because they are the lowest responsive responsible bidder.
Don't say to that, we can reject any and all bids.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any, any other discussion?
Yeah, I just got a question.
Yes.
I mean, I'm not going to micromanage your office, you got, you got the money in your budget. Is that, that's correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Another que, other question that I have is the agreement. We, you're going, we just do it for you to keep, continue to move forward, then you'll bring the agreement back.
I'll do that.
Okay. I'm not going to.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand.
We're not approving the vendor, we're approving the presentation of a group of contracts.
From that vendor.
From that vendor.
Yes, okay, those opposed. Okay.
So y'all want to see the vendor and let them, get the presentation?
The, the, the agreement, which, uh, Anita and Brian will work with you on that.
I appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're down to the economic development, Commissioner Richardson.
Me, you know, I have, I have a question that's been in my mind for some time.
That has to do with economic development. Frequently, and I'm sure a lot of this is rumor, it goes all over the place, that such and such a company was told they couldn't come to Beaufort County, that, that, that we didn't want this, or we didn't want that, or we didn't want something else. And I'm not sure that there's even a way to do this, but if we tell companies that they shouldn't come to Beaufort County, or Beaufort County's not the place for them, or reject them in any way, I think that should come to the whole Board of County Commissioners. Maybe even in a closed meeting, because we would not necessarily want to identify the company, but we don't, I'm not advocating that we do anything tonight, because my question is on whether economic development denials should, uh, should require notice to the Board of County Commissioners. I just don't think we get enough notice.
So Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to address that. So yes, Commissioner Richardson, those are rumors that are running around that we have denied all these folks, we have not. I think we've told one company that they would not be a fit there, and they were a supposed, um, munitions, large munitions manufacturer. And, um, and we did tell them that, no, that was not appropriate there because the zoning wasn't correct for it. So that's the only one in the last time I've ever, that I've been here that we've, that we've said to a company, no, that's not a good fit because it doesn't work. The way the process works is, is we submit, um, responses to requests for information. So the state will send us what they call RFIs, and that's when a company is looking for a place to locate. And it has, it's usually anonymous, it's a project name, so we don't know what it is, we don't know exactly what they do, but they tell us in the RFI that they need a certain size, they need certain access to certain amenities, they want to be within a certain range of X, whether that's an international airport, whether it's a port, whatever. And we reply back to those with what, with, with the areas that we have that may be available. So whether it may be, um, the Aurora Industrial Park, whether it may be the Chaco Winnity Industrial Park, or whether it may be the Washington Beaufort Industrial Park, that bits best fits that, because we're trying to show that we have a good product, so we would, we would put our best foot forward on that. Then we may hear back from them, we may not hear back from them. If we do hear back from them, typically they come in and they, and they, they'll do a site visit, and that's when we sit down and we start talking with the Economic Development Board about it, what kind of incentive we might want to offer to them, what things that we can do for them to draw them in. If we get to the point where the Economic Advisory Group says, yes, we think that's a good idea, it gets recommended up to the Board of Commissioners, if we've got a project that's on the hook, and, and that's when y'all see it.
Did you have a comment, Ed?
I would say the same thing Brian said, but I.
I said a little different. I served on, on that board and I have not heard any rumors or anything about, uh, I know the board haven't denied anybody since I've been there, and, uh, we welcome businesses.
Okay, want to go to Chaco?
Uh, well, we're, we're going to stay on this one just a minute more, if that's okay, Hood's initiative.
Yes, are you speaking?
Like to.
Okay.
Okay. Considering that there was somebody that wanted to come to Beaufort County, was that recent? There was a munitions factory?
I think it was six, nine months ago, is that right? Yeah.
Six, nine, how, how large were they?
I, I don't, I don't recall.
They, they wanted to come to, uh, Industrial Park South?
No, they, they sent an RFI to us saying, we're requesting this information, and we replied back that that was not a fit for this, for this location.
And, and, and he called me on a Sunday and spoke to me about an hour, and I told him the people he needed to contact, apparently he did. It also included a Chick-fil-A, which I thought was very, very odd.
So this was six or nine months ago, um, and this was a, they wanted to go to Chaco Winnity, but the zoning was, was, was wrong. It was light industrial, needed to be a, a different zoning, like heavy industrial.
The use that they were proposing was not allowed under the zoning, correct?
They could go anywhere else in the county.
Got too many mics.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have industrial parks anywhere else in the county that aren't zoned.
Yeah, but was that one of their requirements, that they be zoned?
They were looking for infrastructure, so I mean, we don't have anywhere else that's.
Oh, that had the infrastructure.
Right.
But if they wanted to, they could do their own study and go anywhere else in the county that they could get in.
Sure.
Did, did it occur to you that were in charge of this, that you might discuss with them that we could go to Chaco Winnity as we're going to them now, to seek a revised zoning upward to, or get rid of zoning altogether, if at all possible, so that that might be possible for, um, a large concern, such as a munitions factory?
So, um, first of all, you can't get rid of zoning, it's in the city ZTJ, they by law have the ability to zone it, so there's no way to get rid of zoning. We're at, we are in the process of, tomorrow night, it's on their agenda to consider a heavy industrial. And if we would have believed that this was a viable project, then, and there would have been additional conversation, then we could have, we would have said that to them. However, it was not in the zone. it was not in the zoning. So we get a lot of inquiries, and some of those inquiries are not viable inquiries.
And you consider that's not a viable inquiry?
That, correct. Not when it's tied to whether we can do this and locate a Chick-fil-A with it.
They did ask for a Chick-fil-A, had to have a Chick-fil-A out there?
No, 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 they said they, they would include that with the 81-millimeter mortar.
Okay, you would, you want to give the update, Brian, on your conversation with the planning board and the mayor?
Yes, sir, happy to do that. So I guess it was two weeks ago, I met, we submitted application, and when I met with the zoning board for the town of Chaco Innie, we requested they consider expanding to heavy industrial in the industrial park. It was, it was modeled, the Mideast Commission does their zoning, does their planning work for them. So the zoning for heavy industrial was modeled after the town of Washington, the city of Washington's heavy industrial. So that was presented to them, they unanimously agreed, approved, pushing it forward to the city commissioners. So tomorrow night is when they're holding the public hearing on that, and I'll be there tomorrow night to present our case and answer any questions they may have. You're aware of how, even though we don't have zoning, you're aware of how that goes. They have a public hearing for, to receive comment from the public, and then the Board of Commissioners, the city board commissioners has the ability to either approve it up or down. That's where we stand right now.
Could you have the clerk email us a copy of the proposed, what their definition of heavy industrial is? Because this thing can go all over the place. City of Washington's is not really that great.
Yep, sure be glad to, I mean, I've got the list right here, be glad to make copies and get it to everybody.
Thank you. Will you, will you do that, Katie?
I will send it to you tonight before I go home.
Okay. Commissioner DeFric, on the institutional corruption resolution.
Yeah, voting integrity in America today is at the highest concern. I have some very good constituents, some people have even served in office, and they're so disgusted with what they see for voting integrity in, in the United States and in other places that they, they've even said, they, they themselves have even considered not voting. They say that their own past constituents are considering not voting because the problem is, they feel that if, some people are allowed to vote that are not citizens, then that cancels out their vote. That total disenfranchisement is a factor that all parties, the Republican Party, and even in the past, believe it or not, the Democratic Socialist Party was concerned about disenfranchisement of, of voters. They made a big deal out of people showing IDs and that, that was a, a large issue in North Carolina for a long time when actually all you have to do is show that you, you do have an ID, you are a citizen. It's very important that we are citizens. Now, what happened recently, and this was, has caused a lot of people to worry, is the Department of Justice, Harris, Harris Biden, Department of Justice has gotten involved in states' voting practices. They've, they've, through the DMV and other areas of interest and, and numerous dimension at this time, they have gotten involved. They have stuck their nose where it's not supposed to be. There are certain things that the Department of Justice can be aware of, generally it's for civil rights issues. None of these are civil rights issues. If you're illegal in this country, you have no civil rights to vote. That's just the way it is. And just recently, in Virginia, one of the most curious things I've ever seen, to the point of pure insanity, the Department of Justice got involved with 1,600 votes that were cured from the Virginia rolls. State of Virginia said, we found these people to be non-citizens. They've actually admitted that they're non-citizens. Department of Justice said, no, you can't take them off the rolls. Two lower courts said, yes, the Department of Justice is right. They were in the DC area, they pretty much do whatever they can to help the Democratic Socialist Party, obviously, to help the party out. Now, Supreme Court quickly, very quickly denied that those, those 1,600 non-citizens could vote, so they were removed from the rolls. That's very important. That set a precedent, set a precedent for other states. Here in North Carolina, we have an amendment that we're voting on right now, House Bill 1020, 1074, it's a citizens-only amendment. The General Assembly of North Carolina is concerned enough about our own constitution being right and it stating expressly, you must be a citizen to vote in this nation. The way that works is, as we all know in the Constitution, general assemblies elect their own representatives, and they elect the President of the United States, they set the rules in a self-governed society as, you know, our states do the electing. We as a county, a body politic of the state of North Carolina, we elect locally people, okay? We do it as per state law. It's a very big concern in the United States that this be done properly. What I, what I'm seeing, some people don't want that. I, I've always wondered why, three and three-quarter years ago, when they decided to throw open the southern border and allow tens of millions of people to come through. Now, it's, I've been heard 10 million to 18 million discussed that have come in, known and unknown, or flown in, a lot of them are being flown in now. And you wonder, why are they doing it? A lot of people think that this party, Democratic Socialist Party, want to vote these people eventually. When you start hearing pathway of citizenship, what this means is amnesty. We're gonna get them voting, we're gonna get it so they can vote, and it's destroying the nation. People talking about the economy is the biggest problem, the biggest problem is the border. The, the border is influencing the economy on so many levels. Here in Beaufort County, we are spending probably five to six million dollars minimum on illegals every year, educating them through Department of Social Services and other areas, maybe in the jails, whatever, it's costing us about that much money. And this doesn't have anything to do with the medical field. We're out of the medical field. This is just what the county taxpayers spend. So what I am stating is, I wrote a very short resolution about, well, it's, let me, let me read the title and that should explain it. Resolution acknowledging that allowing non-citizens to vote is a threat to our democracy. We've heard a lot about democracy lately, how, you know, we gotta shore up our democracy. You know, we are a republic, a democratic republic, and you could say that, we're a representative republic, we are definitely a constitutional republic, but the democracy of this nation is the election of our representatives. So that being an issue for so many to be concerned about, I wrote this resolution. I will, shall read it. It's very short. Whereas the right to vote by public election for every American citizen is sacrosanct, with that constitutionally guaranteed right benefiting every American citizen within this democratic process of a self-governed society, and whereas the constitutional right within the corner, within the cornerstone of any representative republic, of which American citizens have the privilege to be at the sovereign core of its continuance, is marginalized for every voting citizen when non-citizens are allowed to vote unimpeded, thus leading, and whereas wide components within the institutional, institutionalized bureaucracy such as the current, current Department of Justice has been corruptly politicized to the point that they have enacted wide-ranging lawfare against an unfavored former president and current candidate for the same office, and has continued to use their corrupt offices to impinge upon the state's rights to cleave those that are non-citizens and those that do not exist from their voter rolls, and where it has been widely discussed by interested parties in its continuance that the true purpose of the democratic socialist continued wide-open southern border policy is to bring illegal aliens scattered far and wide within our borders to eventually vote illegally and unconstitutionally in current and future elections for sympathetic democratic socialist candidates. Therefore, let it be resolved. Beaufort County's commissioners firmly believe that the American citizen's right to vote is sacrosanct and what it means to be an invested member of a self-governed constitutional republic, that in this representative republic, our democracy is strictly a tool as our democratic process to provide for our more perfect representation as a self-governed people, and therefore, let it be further resolved. Beaufort County's commissioners do rightfully request that the Biden-Harris Department of Justice end all of their corrupt practices to influence this in future elections, and the state legislatures, and in particular, North Carolina, take a hardened and unrelenting stand against all unconstitutional efforts about all non-patriotic practices to disenfranchise real American citizens and their sacrosanct right to make their own votes count. So, and of course, I would like this to be sent to all of our representatives-
Second.
-and other counties. Because this counts, this matters to all counties.
I got a question.
Okay.
I want to vote for this so bad, I don't know what to do. But please tell me, what do you call voter integrity? When we got a president that's gonna be, run tomorrow, that's got 34 felonies, now what's any more lower than that? Even in North Carolina, a person in North Carolina today that have a felony cannot vote.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Where, where has he got this, this felonies? What, where did he get them?
He got them in the United States.
Where, no, tell me where, tell me exactly where, geographically where.
Under code of law.
What code of law? Tell me where, this counts, this matters.
I just wondered, I just wondered what was voter integrity that you had.
Well, I'll, I'll say that rightfully, he has no felonies. You can't tell me where it is, I can tell you he has no felonies against it.
You better tell him.
None whatsoever.
Let's, let's get back to the resolution. What, any other question on the? Yes. Any other question? Have you voted?
Voted.
Yes. Have you voted?
Yeah.
For this?
No, 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 have you voted?
The national election.
Yeah.
So there was a constitutional amendment?
Right. A state, no, yeah, state constitutional amendment.
Yeah, so I mean, what good do you think your resolution's gonna do as it relates to the state of Washington?
The state of Washington, I'm talking about the state of North Carolina.
Well, we, it's, it's already on the ballot.
Yeah, instead of North Carolina.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
It's the state of Washington.
I, I guess I'm a little bit mixed on what the purpose of this is.
Oh, the purpose is, is to reinforce-
When it's on the ballot, when it's already on the ballot.
It's to reinforce what they're doing in, in the general assembly. Let them know that we're behind them 100%.
But it does not say that we support-
You want to put that in there? We'll put that in there.
Yeah, and, and the bill, you say there's a bill.
It's House, it's House Bill 1074, it's the citizens-only amendment.
So can we-
And I, I agree with you, Frankie, it is a very good amendment. I, I, I mean, it, it's already stated in the US Constitution that these kind of things shouldn't happen, but it needs to be reinforced and at the state level where we elect our, our representatives and through the general assembly. It is wonderful that they're putting it in the Constitution of North Carolina. It's very important. And I, and I would accept that as an amendment.
Okay. To, to Katie, for the state, for the state bill as well as the constitutional amendment as noted on our ballot?
Yes, House Bill 1074, citizens-only amendment to vote. And I appreciate you bringing that up.
Okay. Well, I mean, I have trouble sometimes when I read yours, trying to figure out what you're pushing for. So I, I, I just like it when we're specific as it relates to Beaufort County and North, the state of North Carolina.
Well, I, I did talk about that, and it's good to have that in there. You're right.
Yes, all right.
I'm gonna vote against it, so Hood will stay up all night to make a board about me for the vote, vote tomorrow.
Okay, okay. Politics aside, now, let's go, anybody else got anything to say? All right. Let's, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand.
Whoa, 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 do we got a second? We got a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, that was an hour ago.
I don't think it was an hour ago.
Okay, all those opposed.
All right.
All right.
It's good, four threes is good as a seven oh, in my opinion.
Katie, will you, will you read us into closed session?
Motion is needed to go into closed session under NCPS 143318115 to establish, to instruct the public body staff or negotiation agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease.
Okay, can I have a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
Motion to second, all those in favor, raise your right hand.
If we lose, there we are here.
Okay. We're back out of closed session, I need a motion to come out of closed session.
Come on.
Need a second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. We're good? Okay.
Motion adjourned.
Whoa, whoa, you got your two-minute thing.
All right, I guess it's a political speech, you ready to go?
Were you gonna go back in there on personnel?
Uh, no.
Do we need to vote to, to make that offer? Is there anything we need to do in the public on this? I don't think we can make that decision in a closed session, what, because it's a final decision. On, on your, on what you just, what is? Yeah. No, no, you, you were, you were given instructions on negotiating.
Still negotiating.
All right. Okay.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
Okay, what I want to do is raise an issue that's becoming more, more and more of an issue with time, and that is items arriving late for the commissioners' meeting. Tonight, the sheriff's presentation didn't have all of the information that he brought in here, he had the information. They sent me stuff on email that you couldn't copy off the email, a lot of the so-called dirt in there was not, I can't print it off. So there's some problems here in communicating with commissioners and bringing information to them. I'm particularly offended when somebody walks in here and, and a meeting, something's on the agenda, they slap a report down and say, approve it. You know, you've heard me complain about this in the past. I would like staff to work when people are, say they have items to bring to us, to give us the meat at least in the agenda booklet, if not before. This, this is a, this is a serious problem because we've had, we've had two or three things in here tonight that just were not completely presented.
So absolutely happy to make sure that occurs, but you understand, we got it from the sheriff when we got it from the sheriff, and either in or we pull it, so.
Yeah, we'll pull it from the agenda if they're not properly prepared. I mean, that's the only, that's the control that you have. You don't have your presentation, so we're taking this off the agenda until you do get-
Does any other commissioner have any comments?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, got a motion to adjourn, is there a second? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand.